If I could have everyone's attention, I would like to call the October 10th, 2023 work session to order. Welcome. We're glad you're all here. If we could all, well, first let's approve the agenda, sorry.
Gosh, you're messing with this.
I'm messing with y'all. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Lindsey and a second by Mike, all in favor, unanimous. Now, we will stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, presentation and discussion items. First up, we have Mr. Mitch Young with the draft of the redistricting map. How are you?
I'm well, good afternoon. So we've got some redistricting to talk about, and then we've got some calendars to talk about.
Mitch, make sure that mic is on.
We could talk about the Phillies getting beat.
Is that better?
Yeah.
All right, so we've got redistricting and calendar to talk about, so I'll start with the redistricting. I don't know that I've ever been more excited to hear about assessment in education than I am tonight, so I'm going to get through this and we'll bring them on. Actually, when it comes to the redistricting, joking aside, I'm actually somewhat excited about this because it brings some relief and meets some objectives that we laid out. Before I get into it and pull up the PowerPoint, I do have a few things I just kind of want to read to you, some thoughts that I had going into this tonight to kind of kick off the presentation. But obviously, we live in a rapidly growing system, and when you do, you have to build schools. And when new schools are built, the charge for us is to efficiently populate the new school and relieve the overcrowded schools as best that we possibly can. And our proposed plan that we're going to share tonight or reshare with you does just that. It accomplishes both those objectives. I would be remiss if I did not start this afternoon and out by thanking our community for their feedback, both online, we had a lot of turnout online, as well as at our public forum last month at West Forsyth High School. And I really want to thank you, our board members, for pouring over all of that commentary and listening to our citizens and really taking into consideration all that feedback, as I know that you do. It's a necessary process, but it's probably one of the most challenging processes that you, as a Board of Education, have to face. We're really fortunate, it's a double-edged sword perhaps, but we're fortunate that our children and our parents love our schools so much. I say double-edged sword because they love their schools so much, and it makes it tough when you talk to them about moving to another school in a redistricting process. I would like to mention our facilities team, and just to point out again how hard our facilities team works and how continuously they are analyzing and studying patterns of growth and proposed construction projects throughout our community. They work with city, county, and state officials to do their best to predict and project where the thousands of people moving into our county are going to end up. And while it's an imperfect science, as anything that tries to predict human behavior tends to be, our crew has done a phenomenal job through the years of pinpointing in advance where our student populations are going to be. And it really is no surprise to us or to you that the western side of our county is growing so rapidly. That's why Poole's Mill was built, it's why the new Midway Elementary was built, with space nearly twice the size of the original Midway was built, and it's why we purchased in advance land throughout various parts of the northern section of our county. But even with that forethought, challenges emerged that put pressure on our schools. Zonda, which you might remember used to be known as Metro Study, is a system that looks at growth patterns in real estate all throughout the metro area of Atlanta. They just released their home market report for the second quarter of 2023. In it, the fastest-growing submarket in the entire metro Atlanta area is the West Forsyth section of our county. That is the number-one fastest-growing submarket in all of metro Atlanta. And it's that kind of growth that leads to the explosion in student population that we've seen at places like Sony Elementary and in areas north and west of there in particular. The need to relieve Sony, Brandywine, and Mashburn, as well as to populate the newly-built Midway, is what led to this redistricting. Those were our two stated objectives from the beginning, and they remain our objectives today. I've been in this county now, I think, for 16 years, and I have never seen a redistricting that did not involve high emotions, particularly among those parents and guardians who moved from one school to another. And I understand those emotions, having lived here and raised children here and having been redistricted. I understand those emotions also because our teachers and our staffs, as I mentioned earlier, work so hard to make their school the best. And why would anybody want to leave their school with the job that our staffs do there? But what we're talking about is literally taking students from one highly-successful school and moving them into another highly-successful school. At the end of the day, that's really what we're talking about doing. The other thing I've learned in my 16 years here is that once children settle into the new school, and children settle into them pretty quickly, they love it, and they become attached to it very quickly. And the adjustment for the children takes very little time, is our teachers and our administrators work very hard to welcome them and bring them in. In addition to the work of our facility staff and our operations department, I really want to highlight the transportation team in particular, is they make certain that when we do a redistricting that all of our bus routes and travel patterns are safe. And they have done that with this as well. I know that there are some neighborhoods that will be asked to travel down Post Road to attend Vicarage Creek Elementary School, but nearly the same number of students that we're putting on the Post Road will be pulling off of Post Road to take down Campground Road as a way to get to the new Midway. It's almost, nearly a one-for-one swap-out. The move of Midway's physical location also should provide some relief to the congestion that we see that gets built up down at the intersection of Post and Highway 9. And this is coming directly from studies done by our transportation department. While many of our parents have contended that they will still head down Post Road to get to the new Midway, what I am suggesting is that certainly with our bus routes, our bus routes filled with children from Midway will be, if they're headed to Midway from those areas, particularly in the Mentally Road region, they are not going to be going down Post Road. And that's when we've given our responses to some of the communication that's come through, that's what that is built on. So let me, actually, let me go ahead and pull up, Suzie, is the map up here?
Yes.
Okay. So this map that you have before you, some minor adjustments were made after our last meeting at the northern end of the Bethelview Road area. But the map that you have before you really is the map we believe meets the objectives that we stated from the beginning and stand by. It populates Midway with a healthy starting number, yet room to continue to grow. It significantly relieves overpopulation at Sony. It doesn't bring it down below capacity, but it gives significant relief to them. For these two objectives to be accomplished, adjustments had to be made to both Kelly Mill and the Vicarage Creek School Zones. This plan also relieves overcrowding at Brandywine. Importantly, in doing that, it stabilizes Big Creek's enrollment numbers. And on the central eastern side of the county, this plan also provides the first of several steps that we need to take to relieve Mashburn Elementary. And we recognize that future measures will need to be taken to expand and relieve that particular school. With hopes that our SPOSS might be extended for a seventh time in the near future, relief schools can and will be built in the northern end to continue to bring overpopulated schools down to smaller levels. Our team, which represents our operations, our facilities, and transportation teams, we believe fully that the map that we've shared with you provides a safe and effective means to meet the objectives that we set out in this redistricting process. I will turn it over to you all before moving on to the calendar.
I just want to thank you for just the introduction, just kind of that summarized kind of where we are as a district and that we're still in the middle of growing pains. And, you know, this is not going to be the last redistricting, of course. So I just appreciate you explaining that well, and I appreciate all the work that has gone into doing this. You know, I think it is a double-edged sword, right? We're in the middle of it, we're still growing, but we do have great schools, and I think that's a positive. And, you know, I know that, I just want to echo what you said about, you know, the children. I really think students, they are resilient, they handle change much better than we do as adults. And I think that, you know, I know I've seen in my own children, one where my daughter had to move kindergarten teachers. It wasn't an actual school, but two weeks into it, they had to get a new kindergarten class, and she was on the list, but I didn't get the email. So I thought that was my get-out-of-jail-free card. I was like, well, I didn't get the emails, so she shouldn't move. And they're like, well, she's still on the list, and so if we don't move her, then we're going to have to move someone else. So I was just kind of like, well, but, you know, and then I was like, you're right. You know, why is my daughter any different than, you know, any other student in the room? So, and she thrived, she really did. And I think, you know, with this as a community, I think we can model it for the students, that we can, that they can, they will be resilient, they'll learn to make friends and all that. So anyway, I appreciate the thoughtfulness.
Thank you.
And our community knowing that you all have worked really hard.
Thank you, Lindsey.
And we've looked into it, so.
Anybody else?
Yeah, my issues, I've been dealing with, I'm trying, I looked at all the comments, we read all the comments. Post Road has been an issue for a long, long time in my district. It has been socked in, and anytime we drive more traffic down that road, it gets to be problematic. And I've been looking at the flow of this. It was, a lot of it was drawn, you know, driven by Sony being overcrowded and the growth we have on the west side. I've looked at some options and continue to talk staff about some options to move different things in different ways to kind of keep it off Post Road. You know, I've heard the pain, too. I understand the pain. You know, for me, I was a PTA officer growing up, and I went through redistricting multiple times. We've gone to, I think, six or seven schools in my kids' process. And so I understand the pain of that. But for me, it's more about trying to do the right thing for the system, looking at the comments and understanding where the pain is. The pain is Post Road. And so that's where I'm continuing to look at taking people off Post Road wherever possible, taking them a different direction, you know, not necessarily rerouting them, but giving it a different reason to go a different direction. Because people will take the path of least resistance every time. So for me, I continue to look at how we fix Sony without having to upset Kelly Mill and Vicarage as much. Vicarage's got to be upset a little bit because of Midway. We have to open Midway, that's a given. So looking at all the options, trying to understand the right way, has been my focus. And so that's kind of where I've been looking, trying to see if there are any options we can make and do it differently, so.
Yeah, I think for me, it's, you know, taking everything in consideration. There's just so much to look at, and you can look at transportation, you can look at the student growth, you can look at community growth, where it's coming from and things like that. And then you go and you look at the comments, and the comments are, you know, this is, they're good for it, and there's some that are bad for it, right? And they don't want to do it, and it's not good for them. And then you try to say, okay, let's disrupt as least amount of students as possible. And so we go and look at that, and then you don't realize, hey, this is a bigger neighborhood, right? And they don't want to be split up, they want to be one neighborhood together.
Right.
And so then you got to take all these comments and put them together and look at it. And so would you explain the approval process? Because we're not approving it tonight and what that looks like.
Right, no. So we had the initial draft that we put out. After that initial draft went out, we opened it up for public comment, both through the internet, which we extended by an additional week after we came back from fall break. We also had the public forum at West Forsyth High School. And in that time, you, each of you, I think, at one time or another, either through phone calls or emails or conversations we've had or even looking at a map together, we've spent time to look and see, based on those public comments, why we made the decision that we made and, you know, what was the ramifications of moving this area and moving the line here? And what if we pulled from this to go down, and what would the impact of that? So that's what we've spent the last several weeks doing. And then tonight, based on all that feedback, we went back and re-looked at the lines and came up with a final proposal. Like I said, there's one little area of northern Bethelview Road that was sort of out of whack, that we were able to get back in, and it accomplished some things as well for Kelly Mill by making that move. And at the end of the day, this is the final proposal that we have from our staff to put before you, that then you will have placed before you. Hopefully, next week, Dr. Bearden will place that before you for final approval.
Couple of things. First, I want to thank you, Mitch, Matt, Greg, and the whole team that's put a lot of work into this. I know as a board, several of us have come in, multiple, I think all of us have come in at least once, and several have come multiple times and looked at scenarios and found every which way to skin the cat, as they say. So I have no doubt that a ton of thought has gone into this and very much driven by public input. A personal story, my kids were always supposed to go to South High. We bought our house because it was South High. And then we got redistricted to Denmark, which was, I went from being two miles from my house to over seven miles to the school. And I was fit to be tied, so I understand, I understand. But it's probably one of the best things that ever happened to my kids. It's a phenomenal school, they're being part of building a new culture, building a new traditions. I mean, they're thriving at Denmark. I would never have it any other way today, right, looking back? So for the benefit of the public, I mean, I know it's easier to hear that than to process it, but keep that in mind. My concern with this has been the whole time, we're not really solving the Mashburn problem, right? We're taking Mashburn, pooling, you know, about 228 kids, taking it down to from 162 to 130. I still see that for us as a system as a problem, right?
It's a step.
It's a step, it's a step. I still see it as, even after redistricting, it's something that we, as a board and as a system, should be deliberate in fixing. And I know that the initial proposal was a plan that was maybe five years out from having a relief, building an addition. We've had a lot of discussions as a board and as a governance team, and I just want to say I'm very supportive to the idea of reallocating some contingency funds and looking for other ways to advance that addition. I believe now we have the funds available to start the design and permitting process. I think we should, it's my individual opinion. And I would be very supportive of finding the money, even if we have to draw down a little bit on the contingency, and get that thing built in two or three years instead of five or more years.
Absolutely.
So that's my, one of my biggest concerns with the plan as presented. I understand the issues with Post Road. There is a widening project coming there that's, you know, years out from providing any significant relief to that area. We looked at every which way, I think, and will continue even in the next week to evaluate that.
Sure.
But Mashburn is something that I'm concerned about, and I think we all are, not just me. And I'd like to see that advanced.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I. I'd say one of the state legislators told me Post Road would be fixed in 18 months when I talked to him. I mean, I'm just telling you what they're projecting.
No, so Post Road won't go to, even to bid for 18 months. And it'll be two or three years of construction after that, so it's going to be a while.
Right. But it's, I mean, it's also not, I mean, we do need to work in collaboration with other government agencies, of course, but I mean, we cannot make a student's school choice dependent upon our road infrastructure, so. And then regarding, you know, the Mashburn, I totally agree. You know, I've heard emails, and I've gotten phone calls from people about, well, this is really not relieving enough. And so I do believe when this proposal was created, it was for like a phase in, you know, hoping that in the SPOSS that we could, you know, if all the cards landed right. But I think as we were all, we received information this week that said that, hey, we might be able to do this addition sooner than later. And I think that's definitely something that I'm glad was brought to our attention, and hopefully, we can move forward with that.
And let me speak to the reserve situation for a second, just for the public understands. Probably about eight years ago now, we were very intentional about getting our fund balance up to 15% threshold. The reason for that was when we talked to the bond rating agencies, they said for us to gain a AAA bond rating, we needed to have a 15% contingency. And so the board was very intentional about making that happen. And it was the right thing to do, because when we had our bond in 2018, which was $295 million, having a AAA bond rating saved our district a lot of money. Now, moving forward, as you mentioned in your opening comments, if we can get our citizens to continue to pass SPOSS, we do not think we will need a bond for the future. We will be able to build new schools with SPOSS revenues. So dipping into our contingencies to address the Mashburn issue now, I think is a very viable option. It will drop our contingencies probably from 15% to 13%. We will probably lose that AAA bond rating, but that's not significant anymore because we're not going to need a bond. So as Larry Hamel, our CFO, is analyzing that, I just wanted to say publicly, I think that's a very viable option. And I think that is something, if the board agrees, we can start the planning process right away and get that addition built much sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, and, you know, open for a discussion here, at the very minimum, we should, I would say, pull the trigger on the design and permitting. That's almost a year-long process, and that gives us some time to figure out the financials behind it.
Right, and we don't even need a vote for that, just need consent from the board to do that.
I think that's a good idea.
And it sounds like we do have that consent, and so we can start moving forward.
I think that's a good idea. I just want to say that I appreciate everybody's work on this. I know it pulls at your heartstrings. This is Mike's first redistricting, and it's really hard because you just, it's people's kids and... But at least all of our schools are great schools. And whatever happens, if everybody has a positive attitude and goes in, goes in with a positive attitude, it all works out usually. And I mean, we have to do, we have to populate, we can't let Midway open with not enough kids, and we've got to do something about the other schools that are, it's crazy to have seats in one school and have one school 300 over.
Sure.
That's not fair to anybody, so. But I do appreciate everybody's work. I know you've all been up here, you've called, you've emailed, we've seen it all. So I think that everybody's done a really good job with their due diligence.
And I know I speak for Matt and our staff to say, we love the partnership and being able to work with you. When you come to us with questions, it's always to get more information, it's always to understand the why behind the what. And it's really, really appreciated, the working relationship that we have with each one of you.
So we will leave this?
And it'll be brought to the board next week for a final vote, right?
Okay.
Will this map be published?
Yes. Yep, it'll go out, yeah. I believe the plan is, Jennifer, is to have that posted tomorrow. Yep.
Okay, and next is Mitch Young with the calendar.
All right, this should be a little faster. School calendar for 2526, which sounds strange coming off of my lips. But this is the overview. This is not, we don't have to vote on, we don't have to ask for a vote on the timeline. I just want to share the timeline with you. That on September 15th, we shared an initial draft of a calendar, as we do each year, to our local school councils. They get a sneak preview of it, along with the superintendent's cabinet and each of our building principals. And they take the first look at it and provide me the first wave of feedback. I say I make adjustments. Victoria and I work hard in there, it used to be Suzie, but we make adjustments and then put together the draft that we're here to share with you tonight. And then this will be posted tomorrow, and will stay out there for public feedback until October 27th. That gives me about 10 days to go through all that feedback and to put it all together, to share it with you, and then present a final version to you for approval on November 7th. I'm sorry, that would put it to you to look at on November 7th, and then the final approval we would ask for on November 14th. Things to consider, and I know I've shared this with you, so I guess I'm speaking to any public that's watching, certainly share this with principals. Principals always have great ideas on what's wrong with the calendar, but I have to remind them to fix the calendar, you have to keep these things in mind, and then they're, oh, you know, there's a big "O" in there. But we've got to have 178 school days, right? We've got to have 178 students' tools days, and we've got teachers on 190 contract days. So those two things are right up front. We try to balance the best that we can first and second semesters within four to six days. We try to keep, in other words, we don't want to have 75 days first semester and 103 days second semester. We try to keep those as balanced as we can.
Which makes a big difference for high schools, right?
Absolutely, yes, yep. We also set in there that we want to have students done by Memorial Day weekend. We don't want, that's been traditionally, we have the students completed before Memorial Day. I'm going to mention the August thing in just a minute, but we sort of have that at the front end. But my call to everybody, when they look at this calendar and they start tweaking it and tinkering with it, which is great, that's what we all do, but please remember that every time you remove a day that has an impact on a student day or a teacher workday, you've got to replace it somewhere within that timeline so that we get our 178 students and 190 teachers. So we've got our prefeedback from LSC, principals, cabinet members. This is the calendar that I'm showing you tonight, is our first draft. And I will point out, if, one of the first changes made to this from the initial draft that I shared with our local school councils and others, was we originally had spring break starting March 30th and finishing on April 3rd. And it was pretty overwhelming feedback that we got early on that the first full week in April is what we've come to expect as families and as schools. And so I immediately took that and pushed that to the first full week in April. Here's a couple of the other changes. One of the, in the original, we had January 2nd, over on the right-hand side there, January 2nd was going to be the first day back for teachers, and then we would start students on January 5th. A lot of feedback from the school side of things, and I want to take that into account, just as I do the families. But starting teachers on a Friday, the day after New Year's Day, seemed a little harsh on my part, I guess, over the top, or so I was told. So we made that adjustment. And like I said, anytime you add a day in there that takes away from a student day, then we've got to find somewhere to put it. Did not want to put it after Memorial Day, so we put that back. And so in this calendar, we would actually start on a Tuesday. And we've gotten used to starting on a Wednesday or Thursday. And this particular calendar, to get our 178 student days, we would have to start on Tuesday, August 5th.
And that says August, first day of school, the 6th. You may want to just change that.
Oh, okay, yep, all right.
So it'll be a Tuesday.
So it'll be Tuesday, August 5th, yep. Now, this was the major feedback we got last year. And I, you know, I know it can change from year to year. But the biggest concern that we got last year, and this was a chart that I provided, was last year, when we did the approval for the 2425 calendar, there was a lot of consternation about starting as early as August 1st. So, you know, going back to that original calendar, and I'm not sure how you go back on this thing, but if we wanted, if we were just bent on starting on a Thursday, we would have had to start this calendar that I've got before you on Thursday, July 31st. And just based on last year's feedback, I just thought we would be put through the wringer on that. And so that's why we're starting on August 6th here. But in the calendar, where we made the adjustments, that'll be moved actually to August 5th. And the next time I meet you, I will have bullet points on here, potentially of feedback for other things that the community saw. And that's where we'll go with the calendar.
So how are we collecting feedback from the community?
So it'll go out, it'll go out on all the means, just like we did with the redistricting. It'll go out on all of our social media, school messenger, all those means, and it'll be in survey form. And then I'll be collecting that like I did for the redistricting, putting that together for you to review.
With the change on the spring break, is it aligned with the surrounding counties? Because I know you normally look at that.
Yeah, I will take a look at that, I believe so, Mr. Cleveland, but let me take another look at that.
Because that's one thing we always kind of compare.
And, you know, and that's always come at us as a double-edged sword, too, you know, in terms of vacation rentals and that sort of thing. You know, for some, it makes sense to have them aligned at the same time, and other feedback that we've gotten is, can't we have it a different week than our neighbors? But I'll look into that so I can at least share that information with you. Great question.
Yeah, the problem, too, if you have it a different, if you have people working different, if somebody teaches somewhere else or whatever, and the calendars don't align.
Yep.
Makes it difficult.
Sure, yep.
Mitch, question for you.
Sure.
This might be a little too specific, so if you have to get back to me, but.
Yeah.
February 13th is typically a day off that...
Yeah, let me pull this back up so I can be on the page with you. There we go, okay.
February 13th, that's usually a day off, people have a long weekend, but now it's a half-day? Is that what it is?
Yeah, there's still a long weekend. The professional learning is on that Tuesday. So you've got the holiday on Monday, and then a student holiday on Tuesday. That early release is on, on that Friday, the 13th, yeah. That is sort of fluctuate, I, and again, without having my fingertips at it, but looking at next year's calendar, I'm not sure that that's a full day off, even in, in the calendar that was approved last year for next year, I mean, I can look at that for you.
It is, it is.
But the reality is, is it, is it, it comes down to those, those count days, having a number, the proper number of, of school days for the 178.
So what are, is there an option to make that just a virtual day, in case people have travel plans or?
Well, that's a great question, so, so, and this year's count, the, the current one we're living in right now, next week, which is next Friday, I believe, is the 19th, we will have our first ever day where we're doing an online learning slash conference sort of day. It's the first time that we, that we've done that, but we've, the feedback has often been pretty, pretty significant about not doing a lot of online learning days. So, so we're, I hate to say trying it out, but we're going to really see how it, how it's going to be for the future, how things go next week. And of course, and, and we've got this put in for the next calendar, we have one on the 17th of October, and we have one on the 13th of March. I, I just would be really leery of, of pressing too far forward with too many online learning days, just based on, on feedback we've gotten from the, from the past, Mr. Valdez, but it, it certainly worth, worth more discussion with, with staff and y'all. And we'll see, I, I think we'll get a good feel for that on the feedback that we get.
I was going to say, what is the big deal?
Can you scroll down, see the, the numbers of each semester, the days?
I'm, oh, so
Because we wanted to keep it where it was within six, right?
Yep, so it's 91 second semester, 87 first semester, yep.
And just to clarify, because I know, talking to parents, that the Thursday start is ideal.
I know.
And to make it happen this year, we're actually, you would have to start a week later, is what you're saying, you would have to start that Thursday.
So, yeah, when you look at this calendar, for us to start, again, keeping in mind the parameters that we've self-imposed, is to start no earlier than August and have students no later than Memorial Day. With the professional learning days and the holidays that we've got built in there, it, it just was impossible. And the only way we could go is to start it on July 31st to get that Thursday in.
Yeah, yeah.
And that, and that's what last year, just by going to August 1st, I, I felt like if I brought it on the
If you were to put it on the 7th, if you were to put it on the 7th, then that would take it to 85 days, correct?
So if you took it the 7th, yeah, then that, that eliminates, yeah, that, that limit takes it to 84 or 85. And then you would have to make that up on the back end, which means then you'd have to bring the, those, those three days, or two days, you'd have to tack on at the end of Memorial Day. Or you'd have to take away from one of your holidays.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, even if you can make it the 6th, Wednesday, I, I think people really like that, just a couple or three days, that first week, especially for the little kids.
Yep, yep. Last thing I would say, for, for staff that look at this, you know, they'll look at those days, that, that we've got three days stacked up after Memorial Day. And, and Derek Hershey, Human Resources, Leanne Rice, and Teaching Learning, and I, we're, we're working on some, some options where we have some professional learning that will take place over the course of the summer, as we traditionally have. And there may be an opportunity there where we can, where we can have them do some of those days, instead of maybe right at the end of May, potentially flex those into June. That's just being investigated, but I want to put that out there in case the teachers are listening to this, that we're, that we're looking at that. Okay.
All righty.
Thank you.
You're still awake back there, I've got a warm-up for you.
Next, we have Student Assessment and Georgia Milestones Review with Leanne Rice. How are you this afternoon?
We are excellent, how are you doing?
Good.
We're going to pull that calendar off. So I am very pleased to be able to share with you our milestones results from last spring. And I'm excited to be able to introduce you to our Assessment and Accountability Team. We have a new member of our team this year that you all approved last spring. We have added Heather Talent, Dr. Talent, to our team to be the coordinator for assessment. And then you all know Tim Keizer, who's our accountability coordinator. We've readjusted some of the responsibilities within Assessment and Accountability, and I am just, could not be more proud of the team that we have, working with Assessment and Accountability. And you're going to hear some of the things that we're doing, but this group of people, especially Tim and Heather behind me, have really set things up well. So as we go in and share our results with you, just wanted to remind you of our governance goals, especially Goals 2 and 3, and then also tying to our strategic plan. Teaching and learning is very well-versed with student achievement and student growth, and so we're excited to be able to share these results with you today. We will share specifically our Georgia Milestones results, which are the main components of our achievement scores. And we're also going to talk a little bit about growth. This year is the first year in a while that we're going to have student growth percentiles. We do not have those yet, but those will be coming. And then our growth is also determined from our access scores for our students who speak another language. And then I will finish up by talking about some next steps with this data. So I am going to let Tim start off and tell you about our assessment.
Okay, so this slide shows you for the milestones, which subject, which subjects and grade levels are assessed at the, for EOG. And then for the end-of-course test, which subject areas. Do want to point out that we're looking at Algebra I results from this previous year, but for the year that we're currently in, we'll be testing Algebra Concepts and Connections, which is the new course. Okay, so for end-of-grade results, this slide shows the percentage of students who scored at the proficient and distinguished level for both the system and the state. I want to point out a couple of things on this slide. First of all, you'll notice science is only assessed in 5th grade. And then also, as you noticed, that the contour changes at each grade level. That typically has to do with the trend for the test. So when you, when you, for example, move from 3rd grade math or 3rd grade ELA to 4th grade ELA, and you see a change there, you'll notice that it typically moves with the state trend for that test. This slide shows a combination of each of the grade levels, so grade 3 through 5 for each subject area, and of course, science is only 5th grade. Moving on to middle school, so grade 6 through 8, once again, this is each subject and each grade level. The outlier here, well, there's really two, we only assess, the state only assesses Social Studies at 8th grade. But then also Physical Science, you'll notice that our score is commensurate with statewide average there. And the reason for that is that in South County schools, we allow, or we actually encourage all of our 8th graders to take the high school Physical Science course instead of the 8th grade Science course. So that provides them with an opportunity to receive that high school credit as an 8th grader. All systems don't do that. Many other systems choose only the students who they've determined are going to be the highest-level learners to take that course. And so because of that, they receive two scores, they have a Physical Science score for 8th graders, and they have an 8th grade Science score. But I looked at the other similar systems to us, or large systems, who had higher mean scale scores for Physical Science, and I calculated the percentage of test takers, and where ours is, 99% of our students. Those other systems ranged from 7% of their students to 27% of their students who took that course. And then this slide shows the combination of grade levels for the county and for the state, for those students demonstrating proficiency.
Okay, so now we're going to roll into our end-of-course data, and this is for our high school courses. So this slide is showing the proficiency or higher levels, students who scored those levels compared to Georgia's at large, as a whole. All of these high school courses, the EOCs, are taken in just one grade level, with the exception of Algebra I, where we do have a number of 8th graders who take the, the Algebra I EOC. And those are our advanced or accelerated math students who take that. And then we wanted to show some comparison data, pre-pandemic to post-pandemic, right, to this year. So this is our grades 3 through 5 EOG comparison data. And you will see that although we're still below where we were in 2019, we are making some gains. And then this is the same comparison data, but for grades 6 through 8. Again, 2019 to 2023. And then finally, this is our EOC comparison data, 2019 to 2023.
How does that compare from last year?
Sure, the, it's very similar, so
There was a growth, I guess that question was, was there growth coming back out of the pandemic from last year to this year?
Not, not across the board. And some of that has to do with, like, when we saw the trend for that state-level test, as far as achievement. But looking at, looking across the state for 2022 and 2023, there wasn't, there wasn't as large of an increase, or an increase across the board, enough that it would have been measurable to, to demonstrate from 2022 to 2023. So the answer to, my overall answer to that question is no. You know, so we still have not addressed, it gets very complex, because when you're looking at those grade levels where that learning loss took place during the pandemic, you know, you know that we can't, or I shouldn't say we, like, systems, schools can't address all of that learning loss, you know, within a single year. And so those students who, depending on where they were, if they were learning to read, or if they transitioned to reading to learn, that is still impacting results, you know.
One of the things, Wes, that we saw, when you think about our students who were, who were most impacted in the pandemic, I look at our primary students who are in kindergarten, 1st, and 2nd grade, and so much of the foundational reading that we do there, without that face-to-face instruction was missed. And so last year, we saw a dip in our 4th, 5th, and 6th grade students as they were moving up. And that makes sense, because those were our K2 students in 2019 and 20. And so you'll see in our next step, some of the intentional things we're doing to help address some of those gaps and make sure that we're meeting those students' needs.
So if we have these gaps and only missed what we did, I can't imagine what other people missed a year, or more, right?
Well, that's, to the point, last year, we were able to determine by keeping our schools open
Yes.
and by providing the summer school, we didn't drop as far.
Correct.
Right.
So now we're going into the next year after that, you know, and we didn't see much of improvement, but maybe we stayed that same course and still offer this, you know, summer school. And then I guess this goes into the school improvement plans and things like that, right?
Yes, and you're about to see that.
I was going to say, at Sharon, they went through all this with their LSC, so.
So for student growth, this is, and you know, this really ties into that, because, you know, that's, the advantage of looking at growth is that it's comparing a student to either him or herself, or to similar students from around the state. So a student who had the same test score the previous year, how did our student, right, how did this individual student grow compared to that student and their score from this year? And so that's been missing. So right here, and you know, Leanne mentioned that earlier. So the last time we had those student growth percentiles for ELA and Math was in 2019, because you have to have two consecutive years of assessment, and they have to be comparable years. So 2021, even though we had state assessments, we can't use that as a comparison. So the CCRPI score that we'll be receiving, the report will be receiving in November as a system and for schools, it will include growth percentiles for this year. We do already have the results for, we don't have a progress score within CCRPI yet, but we do have the student growth percentiles for access. And we're able to look at the band movement, which is part of where that score comes from. And that's what that second bullet is addressing. So that 10% of the progress score, 70% of our students demonstrated positive movement from their 2022 test compared to their 2023 test. And then 42% of our students who took access both years demonstrated the highest level of movement by moving more than one band.
When you look at comparing for South County to the state, we had the highest scores in 11 out of the 15 tests that we gave. So the majority of our EOG and EOC scores were, were excellent, very, very good. And if we weren't first, then we were second. So we're not, Wes, as you pointed out, we're not back to our pre-pandemic, so we still have a lot of work to do. And we're working very hard in teaching and learning, working with our schools, with our leaders, to make sure that our students and our teachers have what they need, so that we can close those learning gaps. So these are some of the next steps from the district level. And you'll see, I hope, the intentionality of what we're doing to work through our content specialists, our coaches, our professional learning leaders, to make sure that, again, our teachers and students have what they need. When I spoke about the ELA, our reading levels, and you'll see across the state, and really across the nation, this is a focus on literacy. We're looking at everything from dyslexia to the reading comprehension overall of our students. And so some of the very intentional things that we're doing right now, Amy Bartlett, who is our Director of Elementary Education, and Courtney Bean, who is our Elementary Literacy Specialist, are offering the dyslexia endorsement this year. What's amazing is that every single elementary school has at least one teacher participating in that endorsement. And so they're learning strategies to bring back to their schools about how to serve students who are struggling readers. We also have brought in this year, two programs, one developed for phonemic awareness, and one specifically for phonics, that we're doing with our K3 students, to make sure that those foundational skills are being, being delivered. For students that we're seeing struggling with the phonics and phonemic awareness in the upper elementary grades and the early middle school grades, we've bought that program for them as well, so that we can target those students who still need those individual foundational skills in phonics and phonemic awareness. We also have noticed, as I mentioned, our 6th graders this year are really, that's that group that was in that K1, 2 during our pandemic closure time. And so we are working with our 6th grade teachers, all of our middle schools have committed to offering a reading course as their fifth academic. And so we are training those reading teachers in specific reading strategies to address any of the gaps that those students are meeting. And that's going incredibly well. You'll see down our other content areas, mathematics, we have new standards this year, new curriculum, and so we're providing professional learning for that. We've also increased our instructional funds to make sure that we have enough manipulatives in the elementary schools so that students are actively engaged with a conceptual understanding of mathematics. We've done the same for Science and Social Studies, one of our strategic plan goals is to increase student engagement. And so we want to make sure students are doing science, that they're actively engaged and involved in lab experiences. So we've increased in my department, the instructional funds that we're providing to, to buy those materials, and specifically those science lab opportunities. One of the areas that we see continuing to, to show a gap is our English learners. And while our students were very proud of the progress they're making on their access test, which is measuring their language acquisition, their achievement levels are still lagging behind most of our other subgroups. And so we have hired, we have three ESOL coaches in our district that each one serves two different vertical teams and works in the schools alongside teachers to help model strategies and provide professional learning to make sure that we're meeting those students' needs. We also are working very diligently on student engagement as a whole, and I'm very proud of the collaborative work that we've done with school safety, student support, and special education, to work with leadership teams and teachers on strategies and engagement opportunities to work on not only student behavior, but those engagement strategies. So at the district level, those are some of the opportunities that we're providing through the Teaching and Learning Department. And what we do is collaborate with the schools. And so as Mitch, Mr. Young has expressed in an earlier board meeting, as we've talked about the strategic plan and how our schools then work on their school improvement plans, everything is aligned to our strategic plan goals. So when we go back and look at the strategic plan under the learner experience, two of those goals are increasing student achievement and increasing student growth. We also have a goal for increasing student engagement. And so each of those areas, when schools are looking at their own data and their unique needs within their school, then they collaborate with our department and other departments at the district level to develop their action steps and look at the professional learning resources that they need. And so we work with those schools individually to provide those supports with them. And, and what we hope you see is not only the intentionality of our work, but the coherence and the alignment all the way from the strategic plan down to what it, it looks like in a classroom. So what questions can we answer for you?
I do have a question. This is a little bit of trivia, so I'm not, I'm not asking for the specific answer, but has our, has our ESOL population grown significantly?
Significantly, yes, it has.
Over of magnitude, do you know?
I'd have to get that exact percentage for you, but I know where we've had I'd have to get that exact percentage for you, but I know where we've had certain schools that have. Have had pockets of our English learners, we now see the impact in every single one of our schools. And our newcomers have increased significantly. We're seeing a lot of immigrants. We've seen a big increase specifically from the war in Ukraine. We've seen a lot of students coming from that area. As well as continuing to see families from the Central America and Mexico region.
So as that population grows, I imagine that that's a little bit of an anchor on our on our scores, right?
Yes, and you know, when we look at our graduation rates, last year's graduation rates, our English learners were at 83%. Where our district as a whole was at 96%. So that is a that is a targeted area that we are working on and the professional learning that we're providing, not only to our leaders, but also our teachers and how to meet their needs.
So and and listen, I'm probably going to say something that is out of my specialty here, but. It seems to me that student performance is really directly linked to how much the parents can be involved with helping them, right? And if mom and dad don't speak the language, are we considering that in our strategies to help these kids?
Mr. Valdez, I am so glad you brought that up. We offer English classes. And we actually, I was able to share with Dr. Bearden earlier this week, or last week, I believe. Amy Chang, who is our Director of Federal Programs, works specifically with our Title III, which supports our English learners. We have a family engagement coordinator that you all allowed me to hire last year, and she works with our newcomer specialist to provide opportunities to parents. And we offer English classes at DeSana Middle School, Denmark High School, Central High School, and the Forsyth County Public Library. And we have over 80 parents that are engaged in those classes. We work with the Ola Language School. And as we graduate families, we bring in more families. So that's due to the partnership we have with the public library, but also with Ola Language School.
Awesome. Yeah, I think as as a board, whatever we can do to hyper focus on fixing this post COVID situation, even though we're doing. You know, better than any other system. I hate seeing that graph.
We always have room to grow, absolutely. And we are very, you know, as we've said, we're very intentional. We. I have surrounded myself with incredibly brilliant people who are great at the data and looking at those gaps. With Amy Chang in our federal program, she's doing the same thing, looking at our Title I schools, our students in poverty. With Sarah Taylor, looking at our students with disabilities and and Cara. And so we we really look not only at our overall growth, which you saw in this presentation. But looking down at each of our subgroups and how we can meet those needs. And when we have our CCRPI results that come out in November, that gives us a much clearer picture into each of those subgroup areas.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I appreciate the insight into the milestones, but I think we ought to take a little bit of time and celebrate our SAT scores.
Yeah.
I mean, that's brand new news that came out, and it's that's a big deal.
Yes, SAT and ACT both are are very, very positive in our district.
And graduation rates were released today, and we had the highest in metro Atlanta and amongst large systems, well over 95% again, so yeah.
Well, I just want to make make a comment on the numbers from 2019 to now, and I think you made a great point of what was last year been that was hard to. See the growth within one year, so it's not really a baseline until next year, we can say, okay, now we're starting. But the number two, you know, is the COVID, is the, you know, anxiety, is all that stuff that's coming out. And so within that number, even though we're not where we were before. I mean, I'm super proud of the work that you're doing and that in the strategic plan, how everyone said, you know, mental health for our students and. Social emotional learning is very important because if they're not feeling safe and secure, they're not going to be able to learn. I think there's way more elements thrown at them now than in 2019, so. I appreciate that. And just in going to the different schools and their LSCs. You know, if you're, if you've got a child at an elementary school or middle school or or high school, you know, and you're. Wondering what your school is doing specifically to target or what the data is. You know, I know that they're they're very open to sharing that with any parents or anyone who's interested in knowing that information and. And and how to move forward in your own school to work on that community specifically. So, thank you.
There's lots of moving parts.
Lots of moving parts, but we're very proud of our work, and we will not rest until all of our students are achieving at their highest levels.
And we're very proud too. I have to say, when we go to conferences and stuff, we we get all the accolades because we're there, but we under, we know who really does the work. And we always try to say, it's not us. So we appreciate all you do.
We have the best teachers around, and they work so very hard, and so it's a it's a pleasure to serve and support them.
Okay, oh, you're next too.
I am next.
You're just here all day.
Yes, so next we have the EOC percentage weight. As you all know, in July, our State Board of Education changed the rule for the percentage weight of our EOC courses. So you saw in this presentation, we have four EOC courses. And students in high school, when they take those courses. Before this year, that course, that score that they made on their EOC test counted 20% of their final grade. And so what the State Board of Ed decided was they were going to leave it up to each district to decide. And what they, in their rule, they say that the percentage weight of the EOC test on a student's final grade must be at least 10%. So Heather and I, Heather is the new assessment coordinator. We've gone through several steps because this, if you know Forsyth County, we don't make decisions lightly. We want to take data. And really make a very thoughtful and determined decision. So we wanted to look at both qualitative and quantitative feedback, and so we worked with the Student Information Systems Department. To provide us reports correlating the EOC scores with the EOC course grades. So we could look at each individual student and see what that comparison was. Were they aligned? Was one score higher than the other? How did that impact? So we took that data. Heather and I spent August and September, we met with every single high school LSC. And we shared that school's data with the local school council, and then we also asked the local school council for qualitative feedback. So local school councils are made up of parents and teachers, and in some cases, students. And so we asked them to share their personal experiences with the EOC test and what their feelings were regarding whether we should keep the EOC score at 20%. Or lower it to as low as 10%. So Heather's going to share an update of the LSC.
So at the LSC meetings, one of the things that struck me was what a robust conversation it was. People were really interested at looking at this issue from all sides. If we keep it at 20%, what does that look like? If we drop it, what will that look like? Some of the themes that emerged from those conversations, and you know, we went to each one, so these are just those big themes that came up. Was that 20% of the of the grade should not rest on one assessment on one given day. That was one of the themes that came. Student effort will not be impacted by lowering the weight to 10%. That was an emerging theme that rose at most of the LSCs, if not all. This one was nice to hear. We trust our teachers and the day to day work that's being done in the classroom. Over maybe one day, one test, one determining factor, right? So that that really echoed the work that our teachers are doing in classrooms every single day. As well as preparing for many tests and exams at the same time, and how challenging that is for students. Especially for some students, it's even overwhelming, right? So we talked about that mental health piece, and we heard a lot of parents give their own accounts of what that looks like with their own child. And teachers also talking about the impact that they see on students when we're talking about AP exams happening at about the same time. That EOCs are happening at about the same time that final exams are happening. So it's a, it's a lot of testing happening all at one time in the school year. So those were just some emerging themes that when we looked, when we took a step back and we looked at everything. Those were the pieces that kind of came up because we heard them time and time again at each of the meetings.
So as we were finishing up our LSC meetings, we had the September principal meeting. And at the September principal meeting, I had prepared a folder for each principal. At elementary, middle and high, looking at either their EOG or EOC scores, each student's individual score compared to their either EOG or EOC grade. The score that they made on the test. As a district, our average, our mean score for our EOC scores was lower in every single subject than the EOC grade. So our grades were higher than the EOC scores. So when you think about that 20% weight, for the majority of our students, that 20% was bringing down their course grade, if that makes sense. So that was one of the themes we also heard from the LSCs, where parents talking about their students owning Hope or Zelle for college. And that that could impact their GPA and and not qualify for scholarships. So that was one of the contingencies. But we asked each principal to look individually at your own students in your own building, and what trends, what things are you seeing there? And each of our principals was able to look at individual students to go into the grade book to see. And what we're seeing is that with some of the grades, students are having an opportunity to reassess and relearn. You don't have that opportunity on an EOC. It's one test on one day. Tests like an AP, or not an AP exam, ACT and an SAT, like you brought up, Mr. Cleveland. Students have an opportunity to take that multiple times and try to achieve a score, but we don't on an EOC. So that was something that was considered. We also asked our principals during the month of September to meet with their leadership teams, their teachers, their students, any of their student leadership groups. And get qualitative feedback from them. And overwhelmingly, from that feedback, the the results were to lower the percentage weight. So with all of that data, both the qualitative and the quantitative data, we feel like Forsyth County, the best decision is to reduce the the percentage weight of our EOCs to 10%. Of a student's final grade. So we wanted to share that with you publicly.
And again, it doesn't require a vote, but I just wanted you to hear the rationale behind the decision. They've spent a couple of months talking throughout the community, again, with parents, with with teachers, with students. And it was, it was overwhelming. The consensus was that we should lower it to 10%, which I I'm supportive of. I didn't have a strong feeling one way or the other going into the conversation. I said, well, let's hear from our parents, our staff and our kids and see what they say. And again, overwhelmingly, it was to go from 20 to 10.
Is this what other large districts, or do you know?
It's a great question. Gwinnett County and Acony County are lowering to 10%. Not every district has decided yet. Cherokee and Dawson are keeping 20%. I don't think DeKalb, DeKalb is going 15%. Fulton, to my knowledge, has not made a decision yet, and I haven't seen Cobb's decision.
So that means that moving forward, we can't compare ourselves to other school system.
We'll have to find a different metric.
And then the other thing is with the.
Your milestone scores will still be the the milestone scores.
But the EOC you can't.
What this would be, or your EOC scores, the scores will still be the same. What we will, what this does is the percentage of that score counting towards a student's final grade.
So our baseline that we currently have, that we have to have consistently for two years, we will still have that baseline next year?
Yes, the score, the the results of the milestones and what's compared statewide does not change. The only thing that changes is a student's report card. And the the final report card grade for, say, American literature or US history. So if they.
And what's the benefit to, like, what's the benefit to that? Why would the state say this? Why would the state come out and say, hey, let's drop the the weight of our EOCs?
I think after the pandemic, to Lindsay's point, so many are talking about student anxiety, test taking skills. You think about students who maybe perform well in the class and can master the content, but they're not good test takers. Or they have anxiety about taking tests, and so they don't demonstrate proficiency over that course material on one particular day. But they may in the classroom. As Heather brought up, many of our parents said they trust our teachers more than they do a test. Our EOC exam, while it attempts to address all of our standards through a test. It's a test on one day that generally has about 60 questions, 45 to 60 questions. Which, when you look at some of our courses like US history, that have way more standards than that. It's almost like a Trivial Pursuit Assessment of of random standards that are pulled to be assessed.
If you happen to study the wrong thing, you could, you know.
So help me explain to somebody how we're not lowering our standards.
Well, and can I just comment? I mean, and then you can. So to me, you know, hearing, because I did, I thought, okay, well, if we lower it, then that would be, yeah, that's kind of lowering the percentage. You can think about that as lowering the standards, then, oh, our kid's going to take it so seriously or whatever. It's still part of their grade. And they'll still be, we'll have that metric to to assess it.
And 10% is still enough to drop a student a letter grade if they don't perform well on the test.
But to me, it's it's refreshing because I feel like, at least education, it's going back to kind of how, what, instead of. Teaching to the test, it's like teaching to understand the concept. And so I'm, it's so refreshing that we're getting away from, you know, these these, all these testing. And and the kids are tested enough. I mean, I feel like the test within Forsyth County that that you all have created. Is even harder, I think, than some of the, you know, milestones or or things that go on there. So I I I feel like this is very refreshing, and and I think, I think there's, well, anyway, that's my, that's my.
Well, there's been a lot of over the years comments about testing, 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 all we're doing is teaching for the test, and and that.
Right, and is that the full picture? And I know there there could be critics that say, well, you know, then teachers are just going to give an easy A, or teachers going to, and you know, I mean. We have to believe integrity in our teachers and integrity in our students and just, you know, keep, keep building the the student up and. And I think moving away from just one test, I I'm, I think it's very refreshing.
I know that about four weeks ago, we spent two days with the high school principals. And it was a common conversation among everyone that we wanted to re induce the rigor, bring back the rigor. How does this align with their vision of doing that?
Our principals were unanimous in reducing the percentage.
So all the high school principals said to reduce this?
Yes.
Interesting.
Yes.
Yeah, I guess I sat in some of the LSCs where this was presented, and. You know, I have Lambert South, Denmark, which are very high, not all of our high schools are, but they're schools that have a very high expectation with academics. And the feedback was pretty mixed. There was some strong for, some strong against. I even got some calls after the fact about it, and, you know, to to, you kind of took the words out of my mouth. I mean, we've been hearing we're transitioning from empathy to rigor, but this seems to me to be less rigorous, less rigorous at face value. And half of these, half of these EOCs happen at the senior level, which means a few months later, these kids are going to be in college, where if they don't pass a test, they might fail the whole class. So I'm not sure how that's setting them up.
Actually, none of our EOCs are at the senior level.
The ninth and 12th?
They are 11th grade with American Lit and US History, and then ninth grade with Biology and either eighth or ninth with Algebra I.
So a year later, they're going to be in a situation where many, many college, you guys know this, many college courses are one grade. You got to pass one test or pay again and start over. So that concerns me. Is this something that's set in stone, or if we if we evaluate that it's not a good decision?
This is a one year decision. So if we, we can keep it at 10% from now on. We can reevaluate and see after the spring, how does that impact? And what I'll do is run another report comparing course grades to EOC scores to see if there's a a difference in that alignment. Did we have a bigger gap one way or another? And then we can come back and relook at this next year.
Yeah, I mean, I've been on the board 19 years, and I've heard testing, 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 testing. That's what it, you know. And we've, it's refreshing to hear coming from you guys and the assessment coordinator saying that this test is not the end all. And I've, you know, always harped that we teach the standards. And it's an accumulative learning process through 12 grades. It'll show up somewhere else. I mean, if you don't know the standard that you might have missed on the EOC EOG, it'll show up somewhere else. So it, this isn't the only standard or the only test that grades you on your knowledge.
Well, most of our kids are taking advanced placement courses, they take the ACT, the SAT. I mean, we have lots of data. Around achievement where our students perform at a very high level, for sure.
They show they know the standards and the content that we're driving toward. This test doesn't make them, and so I'm glad to hear it.
I think as we look again in our strategic plan, we have two goals under the learning experience that talk about consistent assessment and grading practices. And that is one of the reasons that I hired Dr. Talent. She has her doctorate in professional learning communities and formative assessment. And that is something that we we need to improve in our classrooms. It's something that was brought up at a lot of our LSCs. Was if we can do a better job of assessing students along the process of learning. Then the anxiety of those summative assessments, including an EOC, we've taken that anxiety down. Because students will know that they're more prepared along the way and not feeling that pressure to perform well on one test on one day. And so that's a big piece of what we're doing as well, is looking at those formative processes.
Well, I think also we need to have our students be prepared for college. My son's in college, he's missed two assignments. This is, excuse the teacher, was when I was at West Forsyth, I had three chances to make it up, and I still got 100. And so, you know, lowering it, we need to keep those standards. We need to be able to keep it because even if they're stressed. Even if they have anxiety because they have a due date on Friday, that's life.
Yeah, we have made some adjustments in our grading practices for this year. One of those is that students are not retaking every assessment. I think some of our schools last year, they had opportunities, especially at the end of the semester, to retake any assessment they wanted. We are not doing that this year. So we've, we've brought some rigor back to the assessment practices. Heather's done a tremendous job of working with our leaders and teachers on understanding those grading processes. But to be able to grade effectively, we also have to assess effectively along the way and make sure that students are getting feedback. the way and make sure that students are getting feedback on what they're learning and what they still need to grow in before that final assessment.
Maybe we can have that as a future agenda item.
So it seems like the driving-
To talk about-
Return to rigor plan.
Okay.
It seems like the driving force behind this is mental health concerns because that's what I've heard consistently. It's the anxiety and-
Well, and also just the test. I think it's two things. I think it is some of the anxiety and the mental health concerns, looking at the whole child. But it's also looking at, does that EOC or EOG represent the full learning of a student of that course on that?
No, it would represent 20% or 10%.
Right. And so is that 20% reflection commensurate with the mastery of material?
So when, and maybe you don't have this answer, but I just, it puzzles me a little bit because we say this is driven largely by, you know, one bad day or, what I have heard a bunch of times is mental health and anxiety and this kind of thing, which is a very real problem. But are they having less of that in Cherokee and Dawson and other counties that have decided not to change the 20%? You probably don't know the answer to that. And what, what does it really do to say, okay, we're going to help you with your anxiety by shielding you from a reality that you're going to face much more intensely once you step into college? That's where I struggle with. So I have my reservations, but I guess we'll, nobody asked me, but I guess we'll see.
I would almost say we need to show some leadership to colleges and teach them how to teach. That's just me.
To your point, Mr. Cleveland, I think our responsibility is also to teach our students where they are. And when I was an elementary principal, I know my fifth grade teachers many times were worried about they're, they're not going to do this in sixth grade, or our eighth grade teachers are worried about what's going to happen to you in ninth grade. Your teachers aren't going to hold your hand in ninth grade. But our job is to teach our students where they are and to meet their needs in that moment. And so while we absolutely want to prepare our students for college and career and everything beyond, we also have an obligation and a responsibility to make sure our students master the standards in the classroom of the grade or the course that they're in at this time. And that's what we're really trying to do through our assessment and grading practices, is make sure that our students have mastered that content effectively. And sometimes that can be measured on an assessment like an EOC, but sometimes it's not. And so finding that middle ground, I think, is very important.
And that's the most important thing to prepare them, I believe, if they're getting the standards of what they need, not what the grade is.
I've been impressed when I do get in the school and get to hear where the kids are going because they're always asking, what are you doing in the hall? Where are you going? They are knowing they're behind and they need to go get caught up on something they need more on. And I see them taking that accountability and responsibility and going and doing it themselves. That was something I didn't do as a student. So I know we're putting that rigor in their, their behavior to go get the knowledge they need to be knowledgeable about the subject matter that's being taught. And we put the standard out there very clearly. So they're doing that. And test questions are test questions. Like you said, they may ask that question and have the knowledge to answer it, they may not. And so the knowledge is what's important. Can they demonstrate it in a different way? You don't get that opportunity with these tests. They're box you in to 20% of you.
Well, and saying what, you're exactly right. Like even in the eighth grade or middle schools, just the amount of opportunity that they have within the day to take one of their flex courses and have it be Help, or one of their connections classes or whatever and have it be, or not connection class, but I think it's a flex, that they have those opportunities there that they can go in and work on that. So, so that they can actually gain the knowledge instead of, I mean, I've seen times in my kids where it's, they learn it for the test and then it's like gone. And I'm like, I'd rather you failed the test so that you retain the knowledge so that, you know, so.
I have, sorry, were you done?
Yeah, I just don't, I could see how the correlation is, like the skepticism, but I don't see how rigor is reduced by reducing the test percentage.
So another question I have for you, it seems like from the data perspective, and you and I briefly talked about this at one of the LSCs, but we're saying because kids scored, and I'm going to use an arbitrary number, 90 in the course and 70 on the EOC, that means that the EOC is dragging down their grade. But are we considering that for that 90, they had retakes, they can turn in assignments?
That was part of what we asked our principals to do, was to, when they looked at their data sheet, they could look at individual students. And so they might see a student who made a 90 as a course grade, but a 62 on the EOC. I want to know the story behind that child because that's a big difference. A 90 in the class, but a 62. The same thing if they made, we had, we had a student who made a 35 in the class, but scored an 82 on the EOC. So what's the story behind that? They failed the class, but they demonstrated proficiency on their EOC. And so what we looked at in those situations was go into the grade book and look, was that a student who maybe had the 90 in the class, but made a 67 on the EOC? Maybe that was a student who had a 95 in the class before that and had eight AP exams they were taking and said, I got an A in this class. I'm not worried about it. I don't care. I'm tanking my EOC because I'm putting all my effort into my AP courses. Or was that a student that never really mastered the content, but did a retest every single assessment to get the grade and they were grade chasing, but they really didn't master the material? So that's where we are with our schools right now. Before we can develop consistent assessment and grading practices, I want our principals to know the reality of what's happening in their classrooms and the grades that students are earning. Why, why do they have those grades? And so when we have a discrepancy between an EOC and an, or an EOG score and a course grade, what's the story behind it? Because it could be two very different things, or multiple very different things. And so when we can get to the heart of the grading and the practices of grading, and does that truly reflect the student's mastery of the content, then I think we can address the consistency of grading practices and have that be more consistent across our district. It's big work, not an easy answer. And it draws, assessment and grading draws a lot of emotion and a lot of opinion. Any other questions?
No questions. Okay.
She's still standing.
And she's still there.
One more.
Thank you, Heather.
But now she has another friend coming.
I do have another friend. I'm phoning a friend.
Hi.
Ms. Sarah Von Ash, Director of Student Support. We are talking to you about a regulation. And as Dr. Bearden has mentioned, our regulations don't require board approval, but this one in particular, a change we made to our regulation, we wanted to bring to your attention because I think it addresses some concerns that we've heard from several of our LSCs and some of our parents. And so within our, this regulation is talking about scheduling for instruction. And so we outline the maximum and the minimum number of courses that students need to take to be considered full-time students. So you'll notice a highlighted section for number two. This was a section that we added to our regulation. Our students have in their schedules in middle school and high school, an opportunity to take seven courses. Six courses constitute a full-time student, but we have seven opportunities to take classes in their schedule. Some of our students, for a variety of reasons, need to take extra classes. Some want to take them for enrichment. They want to take additional AP courses or electives, different things. But some students need course recovery to be able to graduate on time. So we see it from both ends, the need to be able to take some extra courses. In the past, up until this point, if students wanted to take additional courses, they had to self-pay through Georgia Virtual School or dual enrollment or other programs. We weren't able to provide that through Forsyth Virtual Academy, which is our own virtual program here in the district. And so changing this regulation will allow Forsyth Virtual Academy to be an option for students. And why this is important is that within our district, one of the concerns we heard from several LSCs was that students don't have an equitable opportunity to take these additional courses. If they don't have the financial means to do dual enrollment or to pay for Georgia Virtual School, then they are behind. Even if they're academically talented, they may not have the ability to take AP courses and potentially become the valedictorian or the salutatorian of their school, or just to earn additional college credit for them. And so offering this through Forsyth Virtual Academy, we are able to scholarship students. So students who have financial need will be able to take these additional courses and potentially not have to pay for them if they do demonstrate that financial need. So that's a change that we have made to our regulation to be able to meet the need that some of our LSCs had shared as a, as a concern from the feedback last spring.
Does that include like any SAT, ACT prep type classes?
Not through, not through this. That would be something that's with an outside company.
Is that, is that not something that would fit into this? Is that, would not qualify for something we could offer?
It's not a state course. They would generate FTE for us.
Yeah, because one of the things I do hear a lot is some families can't afford, and I know this is not exactly related, but some families can't afford to put their kids through a $500, $1,000 SAT, ACT prep class. I thought maybe if this would solve that, that would be great. We'll keep trying.
Not within this regulation.
But that is something we may want to explore through student support. If there is a need that's there, that's something that we can take a look at, at determining some qualifications and how and why we may want to be able to support that through student support department.
So that part of the regulation expanded. We said that students have an opportunity to have seven courses in their schedule, but that offered an opportunity to take additional courses. The next change that we made, that Sarah will explain to you, is when we would allow a student to take less than four courses. Four is the minimum to earn the FTE.
So as Leanne was saying, within that grid, you see that the four-course minimum for our seniors, we have several students who are enrolled in the Accelerated Career Diploma Program, which is sometimes known as Option B. So that's students who are taking industry certification for an in-demand career, for example, welding. Or we have a student who is getting her early childhood career, care and career education courses. So if students who elect for that type of diploma, they make that notification, it's noted within their student enrollment, and that allows them to take fewer than the minimum noted courses so that they can continue to work within the industry that they're gaining certification in.
So that was a change that we've made to this regulation, is to meet the needs of those students. Currently, we have about 10 students in our district that meet that criteria, but we felt like this was an important option to provide so that those students can get into the workforce sooner rather than later.
Doesn't change the graduation requirements. Just means they can take-
They still meet those graduation requirements.
I met with the student ambassadors from Lambert. I'm, I'm forgetting his name, starts with an S, but he started it this year. And this is a group, I might have emailed it to you. I'm not sure. It's on my agenda to email it, or my to-do list to email it to you. But I know this, the, you know, adding the additional courses with that financial, I know that that's something that they'll be very excited to hear. They did have questions on like dual enrollment and then the class rank again, because I know that that was, so I just appreciate you all looking at this. And they might be a group that I'll, I'll transition over to you so we can all get together, so.
Sounds great.
Anything else? Okay. You're dismissed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure.
Thanks. Okay, we have future agenda items?
Just wanted to announce, so we're going to schedule the Legislative Breakfast probably mid-December. And so at the November meeting, I will bring to you a proposal for legislative priorities. We've already talked about this. They're going to be around student transportation, school safety, and professional development. We'll make a formal recommendation to you in November, talk to our delegation about that in December, and see what's on their agenda for the upcoming session as well.
I think the return to rigor plan?
Yeah, we can do that.
For future agenda items?
Okay.
And I have, are we at the future agenda items?
Yeah.
I'd like to see us, and a few of us have talked about this, these, as we've been considering redistricting, but I'd like to see us have a moment where we talk, we reevaluate our facilities plan, look at how those buyouts are performing. I know that we've come in several million over what we expected some of these contracts would cost, the construction projects. Maybe revisit that and see, what are we thinking if it's still viable and what do we expect?
You're wanting a facilities plan update? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, revisit it, right? We put out a series of improvements in the plan and we thought they would cost a certain amount and they're coming in a lot more, right? So I think we should at least have a conversation about it.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Do I have a motion to go into executive session for Student Disciplinary Tribunal and Personnel?
Second.
Motion by Wes, second by Tom. All in favor? You beat him, Wes.
I heard Tom first.